Is associated with coronavirus, right? We have the ability to hold these meetings and telephone conferences, digital conferences, or any similar technology. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with those regulations and provisions. This meeting is a meeting of the West Gagga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Gagga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please use the chatroom function, I... wherever it's at. If you would like to be recognized for public participation and Mr. Fish will recognize you. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Mr. Ramey.
Here.
Mr. Katsowski.
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson.
Uh, Mr. Thorson, you need to unmute your phone, your mic.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Dr. Beers, you're a little muffled on this side, so...
Okay, I'll speak more directly into the, uh, picture. Uh, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag...
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic...
To the republic of the western states.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in...
Are there any additions or corrections, changes to the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay, let's move on then to our program reports, presentations. Karen, you're up with the five-year forecast, I believe.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see that screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. As you can see, we have a five-year forecast as just a note. We've included the estimates for the Newberry Territory Transfer, and those are included in the five-year forecast. Normally, the May forecast only includes an update of the current year and any major changes that we have going forward. The, uh, what used to be the October, now November forecast is really the next five years. So what we're doing is updating this forecast, and we have a few things that we've had to put in the forecast that we normally would not see. So as we look at the forecast this year, we anticipate, if you can see, about a breakeven, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar surplus over expenses. And then as we go along, we see the Newberry transfer happening on July 1st, 2021. I know it happens June 30th, 11:59, but the actual transaction of switching everything over, staff coming over, all that happens on July 1st. So that's how it's envisioned in the forecast. And then we see our normal projections going out after that. We see, I ending the balance with about eleven million dollars in the 2024 projection. That has a lot of assumptions in it, and we're gonna talk about those as we go along tonight. So I'll keep it as brief. We've already talked about a number of the cuts that we've had to make, but we'll reiterate those as we go along tonight. As we look at the first line item of the forecast, this is the general property taxes. We do see that spike between 2020 and 2021. This is in relation to the increase in the general property taxes associated with the Newberry property transfer. In addition to that, in that number is also the reduction of the collections. Now, we normally have a forecast that has 98% collections. As you know, the county auditor has informed us to internally decrease our property tax collections to 95%. So I've done that in 2021, and then in 2022, I increased it to 96.5, and then they were back up to 98% in years 2023 and 2024 as we collect more of the delinquencies. The really, the reduction in the property taxes, as you know, it's, it's... We'll eventually collect that as the property is sold, but you don't know when that's going to be. The property could go into foreclosure if someone hasn't paid their property taxes. But we do see an increase about overall five million, around 5.2 million dollars from the Newberry for this one year. We do have a blip in the collections in 2021, and it goes over to 2022 because we are seeing a, the property tax is still based on the Newberry rates for tax year 2020, and those collections don't happen until 2021 and 2022 as we look at that because of our, the way our fiscal year falls in the middle of the year. In the personal property, and this is our public utilities. Public utilities are not subject to House Bill 4920, so they don't have that reduction that we normally see. We are seeing Newberry's personal property come onboard. That's only about nine million dollars in valuation, but we do collect that at the full voted rate. And in, for 2021, that's 49.31% when we combine those two. We are seeing that at, again, a 96% collection rate in 2022 and a 95% in 2021. And those utilities, we usually collect 100% of those. We don't usually have delinquencies associated with our public utilities. We don't have an income tax. The unrestricted grants and aid, this is where our state foundation fund comes in. You'll see we're consistent with about 3.6 million dollars. That also includes a payment for preschool and for transportation, along with our casino money. And we get about ninety thousand dollars in casino funds. What we're seeing in 2020, we saw a $541,000 decrease in state funding as the governor tried to balance the budget for the reductions in sales tax and income tax. We're signaling, as we talked about in our last meeting, the signals have been from the state that we would continue with another foundation cut into fiscal year 2021. There's been discussion on how big that is. We, you know, is it 10%? Is it 20%? Is it 30%? There's been wild speculation. I think as the treasurer's talked about it, anywhere from 10 to 20% seemed to be a reasonable amount. Our last cut in 2020 was 15.8%. We're gonna continue that cut through 2021. That reduction is about a $700,000 reduction in our state foundation funding. So you'll see that dip come down in 2020, and then in 2021, you'll see it pop up, and you're saying, well, how can it go up? The reason it goes up is because we now have Newberry's foundation payment, which is about a million, thirty-three thousand dollars. They're also seeing a cut, but not as significant. So you'll see it come down, go up a little bit, and then you'll see it go up in 2022 as it goes back to full funding, and that would be 4.6 million, 4.7 million dollars. So we're trying to anticipate, now, again, these revenue projections, as we look at these two things in the property tax collections and in the foundation, we don't know what they are now. We'll have our first half of the collections will be in the July and August timeframe. We'll know better what those collections will be. Now, it'll be an unknown what the second half, or, you know, the, the March collections will be, but we'll feel better about what that number's gonna be. And then in addition to that, we're going to see, hopefully have some signaling from the state on what the foundation cut would be. We've asked for that. I know they're trying to figure out what their budget's gonna be in June and wait probably until after June before we see what that reduction is going to be when they know what the next quarter sales tax and income taxes will be. So we'll have better numbers to project for our November forecast, you know, but until then, we're, we're having to make a decision. And as we've talked about it, that we thought the similar cut to what we made this year would be appropriate. And normally, that would have been a flat cut. Again, we talked about that in a last meeting, that the, several of the districts that are deemed wealthier from a property tax valuation standpoint received higher cuts than a low valuation district. And that is why we exceeded the flat 3.7% cut that the governor talked about in his address. Restricted grants and aid, these are catastrophic reimbursements for students with high educational cost. We, you know, we had about 118,000. We'll pick up some of the Newberry collections that they have for catastrophic as well. This is an area that this year, the governor could not cut. And part of that is because of the maintenance of effort that they have to show when they're dealing with federal funds for their federal money that they get. This may be an area where the governor does cut that reimbursement because they're really reimbursing us for students that exceed a 27,000 or a $32,000 threshold on their education, and then they pay about 33% of that excess cost. This may be an area where they cut that out. They have signaled that that is on the table. They would have to have some kind of waiver from the Department of Education to waive that maintenance of effort, but it is something that, that we're seeing that they're, they may have to ask for. Property tax allocation, this is the amount of money that we are reimbursed or for the percentage of property taxes that are under the homestead exemptions, and this is coming from the state as well. We see this projected similar to what we have in the general property taxes as those stay about 9, 9%. There's a 10% rollback. There's a residential real estate, 2.5%, and then the, um, the homestead. So we're seeing those come in, and they'll be in proportion to our general property taxes as we have those in place. All other revenues, we're kind of all over the board on this one. As we look at the end of 2020, we see about 2.2 million dollars. We had obviously a significant increase in open enrollment as we seek, as Newberry made some determinations on the property transfer or the territory transfer. We saw about 80 students come over to Newberry, I mean, from Newberry into West Gagga. That accounted for about 500 and something thousand dollars in additional open enrollment revenue. As they switch over to residence, then that will no longer, you'll see the significant decline in 2021 in our other revenues. You'll also see a corresponding decrease in the expenses, but, uh, from Newberry, but we see that in our revenue on our side. The, in addition to that, we're also seeing that our rates for interest have, we've had some 2.4% in the prior year. We've had two. We saw those fall below 1% at the Star Ohio, which is our largest investment pool. So we're seeing about a $200,000 decrease in our, in our interest income, and we'll see that kind of fall as we go along and level out. We're projecting about 0.85% interest rates. We do have some CDs that are tied up with Fifth Third. They're in the 1.5% range. That's only about five million dollars of our investments. The majority of it is in operating, and that's at Star Ohio. Other financing resources, this is where you see the property transfer or the cash transfer for Newberry. It comes in on July 1st. They are estimating on their five-year forecast, and we waited this weekend to get that number. In the original forecast, we had in November, it was 3.1 million as they've had some, same as, we have had some savings related to the closing of school. They also clamped down because they knew they were making the transfer on any other purchase orders that they did not need this year. So that is now at 3.8 million dollars, which is what, um, in line with what we had discussed when we looked at this first a couple of years ago. As we look at the expenditures, obviously salaries and benefits still represent the largest portion of our budget that continues. So we see our salaries and benefits here, and our purchase services being our third largest area. In personnel services, you see in 2020, we project about 14.8. That is taking into consideration the reduction in the salary expenses that we talked about in the last meeting related to the closing of school, in particular, the substitutes, the overtime, the athletic supplementals, and a lot of the transportation costs that are associated with the athletic events and any type of field trips that we had in place. In 2021, we bring over the Newberry staff. The certified and the classified staff will be brought over onto our wages, wage scales, and those have been included in 2021 at that point. In 2022, we see normal increases for steps as, as well. So those have been included in the personnel services. We do have, as we, as we've talked about, the, the cuts that were made in association with, uh, with the reductions in force. Newberry had a nine-person reduction, and West G had a nine-person reduction as we, as we look at those going into 2021. Some of those, as we talked about, were part of the, an overstaffing that we had anticipated going into next year. We'll also seek a couple of changes here in the personnel. We're all looking for, and I did send you a kind of a, just a summary of those things. We will have to hire additional custodial staff as we look to reopening the schools and the requirements related to reopening the schools. But we, again, may need to make some additional personnel changes as we reopen, look to reopen the schools in, in the fall, depending on what we have as enrollment. In particular, our kindergarten enrollment right now is setting still at about 80 or 85 students. That could be because obviously schools are closed, or they think they're closed. We are seeing some registrations, but we're seeing that. Some other concerns that I think Rich and Nancy have expressed to the board is their concern on students not coming back to class but seeking an online education as well. Our open enrollments, we have completed our open enrollment. We have about 140 open enrolled students for 2021. The kindergartens, we've held off. We don't have to make a decision on that until June 30th at this point. Then there's about 11 to 13 students related to open enrollment in kindergarten. Employee benefits, we still see an increase. Again, we see a slight increase in 2020. That's related to an increase in our, our healthcare costs. We had a 5.1% increase in healthcare. In 2021, we have the addition of a couple of things associated with that. We have the Newberry staff coming on to our policy. So we have approximately 35, uh, staff members that currently take insurance at Newberry coming on to our policy. In addition to that, we have unemployment costs that are associated with the closure that we had this spring and into the riffs that we had going into the fall. So that, there's about a $525,000 unemployment cost there. School districts are self-insured for unemployment. We don't pay an unemployment tax. We are self-insured for that because historically, we've had very steady employment. So we can see that. So that's why you see 2021 going up and then 2022 coming down. We still see an increase. We're averaging about an 8% increase in healthcare is what we're projecting. That's based on a, a couple of studies that we've seen. We do have higher-than-expected claims expenses this year. We are, uh, we've had some tough claims. So we are expecting a larger increase than the 5.1% we saw this year. However, we won't have the unemployment cost associated in 2022. Dental, we have a three-year contract. We'll have a 7% increase in dental next year. We've had 0% for this year and the previous year. Purchase services, we do see, um, an increase in purchase services. We saw a number of, um, services that we, for students that we had to anticipate this year, plus our normal increase of salary increases that are associated with purchase services. Some of the things that we look at in 2021 is we're moving the purchase services from Newberry over into our, um, onto our books. Approximately 1.4 million dollars is associated to the outside tuition and the carrying cost of the Newberry properties. But we also have, Newberry has a very high outplacement for open enrollment. So they do send a lot of their, a lot of their students are open enrolled into Berkshire or Chardon. That's about 500 and, uh, 540,000 dollars. Berkshire also had 80 students associated with, with the territory transfer last year. You know, they were open enrolled into Berkshire last year, so we're seeing that. We anticipate that coming down in future years, are leveling off, but we are anticipating about a 500 and something thousand dollar open enrollment expense for next year. This year, Newberry had over a million dollar expense, and that's, again, related to the, the open enrollment into West Gagga. Supplies and materials, we see an increase now. Typically, um, what we're doing here, we, we've been seeing our costs go down because of the closing of the schools, and typically, you would have seen that. And we, we do see some decreases in our fuel cost and in our, in, uh, in some additional costs that we have for supplies and things that we had, we didn't use this year. However, we also increased our expenditures for cleaning and sanitation expenses. So, whoop, I think Kathy had come off. Jim, do you have Kathy back into the room? Kathy, are you back in the room?
Sorry, I'm back.
Okay. No. So we did make some additional purchases in supplies and materials to accommodate that now. We made some additional cost in, in hand sanitizers, which is a large expense for us, and then we did make some masks purchases. Now, we don't know, we do believe hand sanitizer seems to be consistent in our reopening plans that people have been talking about. The masks, however, are all, are all over the place on masks. We don't know what that's gonna be, but this could be an additional area where we have additional expenses going into next year and, and future years. Also going into next year in 2021, we add the Newberry cost on there. We're going to see a significant increase in our transportation cost, particularly as you add the bus repairs and fuel costs associated with transporting the kids that we would, that, you know, we're looking at most expenses where we're cutting those expenses coming out from Newberry, they're going away. That transportation and fuel and repairs will continue and somewhat increase because of the additional couple of miles that the buses will be, will be going. And then supplies, as we're looking at those going into 2021, we'll have some additional cost in supplies. We've kind of moved some of those into, on textbook costs into 2020, and, but we still have some additional cost in 2021, but we've cut those going into 2022. Those are reductions in, in the capital, in, um, the, hopefully, the cost of the cleaning supplies and all that will, will be reduced. In capital, this is another area where we've made some shifts. We typically run, you know, very low. Part of that's because of our PI fund. We're able to purchase our buses and our text, our computers. Most of those are coming out of the PI fund, and we, we use those along. What we don't use those for is the purchase of computers for the student going into the high school because they don't last over five years, and we have to, capital expenditures have to be over five years. So in 2020, Sean came to me and said, we're, we believe because of the, um, China closures, that the laptops or the Chromebooks will have difficulties getting their chips. So we're seeing some concerns on the supply side for the Chromebooks. So we made an additional purchase, or will make additional purchase this week for Chromebooks, $54,000 coming out of that 2020 number, and then that will pre-purchase those things going into 2021, 2022. The remaining portion of that will be have another 80-something thousand dollars in Chromebooks and those for the third and the middle, third grade and one of the middle school grades, those will come out of the PI fund. They just last longer than the $54,000 ones we have for going into the high school. He has also anticipated the additional students coming over from Newberry that their computer needs as well. Enter governmental debt, we paid off our debt in December so that it will no longer be on our radar there. And then other objects, this is an area where we have fees that we're seeing a collection. Most of those are bank fees. Most of those are the tax, the county auditor tax fees. As you remember, in 2020, we kind of have, those are included. In 2021, we're gonna see a spike as we have about $30,000 for the collection for Newberry. However, we're gonna get a refund as well, so those are also included in that. In the other financing, this is an area where we have transfers. This is one we're gonna look at a little bit. We have, uh, transfers that we probably into food services. We'll make some transfers into food services. As you know, that revenue has significantly declined, about $70,000. However, we still have salaries and benefits coming out of those accounts during the summer. So we will probably make a, a transfer. And then in going into 2021, depending on what happens on reopening the schools, I've just added a little bit of that transfer in there as well as we're looking at those. Normally, we budget about, you know, $30,000 in a transfer, and then we have advances that we make into the federal funds if we need to make those as well. So those are below the line, but we want to include those because that is cash that would go out of the general fund into a, into a, an enterprise fund or a federal fund. So looking at this, again, we, um, we see an $11 million cash balance towards the end of 2024. This represents a four-month supply of cash. We spent about 2.9 when we add the Newberry in there. We're now seeing our increase in our expenses, you know, going from 26 million up to 35 million dollars. We're seeing that increase, so that does increase our monthly, uh, cost. So we're seeing about a four-month. That's really in line with the standard set by the general, uh, some of our associations that we do have. At that point, we would be seeking, um, we'd need to be seeking before that point some additional revenue from, from increases in taxes. So as we look at that, we're picking up some of that increase. Why is that changing so much for us? We did have the 3.8 million dollar transfer. We are picking up additional revenue per month, per year. And then we did make significant cost reductions in some of our reductions in force that we made this year that will also be consideration going into the future from what we had originally forecast before. Now, all that said and done, there's quite a few unknowns out there in this forecast. I'll stop sharing, that we are looking at, we'll continue to look at. We've, we've had a task force looking at what happens if we have larger than 15.8% state foundation cuts. What would that mean? Obviously, we would be looking at additional cuts in some of the personnel along with, um, you know, additional cuts. We're, we're gonna be looking at budget cuts on, on supplies and things like that. We've already made those cuts as well in the budget. We've cut textbooks, we've cut, uh, equipment purchases, those things. But what remains are, you know, personnel cuts. So as we look at that, we'll wait to see what we're going to, what the governor's gonna say. We hope we'll get that in June. I don't think we'll probably get it until July or August, but we'll, hopefully, they'll have that in place. But we're required by law to file our five-year forecast update in May. So that is why you have it at this point when we really don't have those answers. Again, the November forecast will have a much better idea of what's going on. Questions from the board on this? I know we've been through a lot of these before. I know the finance committee's been through this before, but I want to give us a last-minute chance to look at these things.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to move on to the point of public remarks. Jim, has anybody indicated to you that they would like to make any remarks today?
There is nothing in the chatroom.
Okay. Then we will move on to routine items. Karen?
All right.
521.
Resolution 143 to approve routine matters of the West Gagga Local Board of Education to include the minutes and the financial statements.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 144 to approve the establishment of new funds related to the CARES Act funding.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions about this one?
These are two funds. One will be the Elementary and Secondary School Relief Fund. We anticipate getting $79,000. Newberry will get some $55,000. But we will also have to give part of that to our auxiliary, our St. Anselm's to the nonpublics. That's estimated to be $21,000. By the way, does the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund? That's discretionary funds and we have not. That will probably end up going to higher ed, but we've established both of those funds through the auditors.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson? Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution 145 to approve the five year forecast update.
So moved. Could you go over that update again, please?
It was so long. I know.
There were a lot of, there were a lot of numbers. I don't know if I can keep them all straight.
You have a something in your board docs for you. You can follow along. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. Do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution 146 approved a then announced certificate.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 147 to approve the April warrants for 2020.
Second.
Who was the first? I'm sorry.
Chip.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Personnel, Richard?
Resolution 148 is to approve long term substitute assignment.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 149 is to approve the 2020 Summer Opportunities stipends.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution 150 is to recommend the award of continuing contract status at the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
No.
Mr. Katsowski?
No.
Ms. Levinworth?
No.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 151 is a resolution to recommend the award of continuing contract status at the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year. This resolution relates to individuals who are subject to a reduction in force.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, second.
Can I just say? Yeah, I just have like to say my concern is that that we've not been able to to complete the necessary three evaluations that we have established in the past. And the state has kind of forced us or as us doing this. So that's where where I'm coming from. Just wanted to throw that in.
Just as a correction, the state does not require three observations.
I know the state doesn't, but we have. Correct?
We have requested them, yes.
Yes.
Any other comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
No.
Mr. Katsowski?
No.
Ms. Levinworth?
Nope.
Mr. Ramey?
You're on mute, Chester.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 152 is to approve certified limited contracts for the 2020-2021 school year for those listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 153 is to approve certified staff appointment for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this or comments?
This is a title position and a consultant, so.
Okay. Do you call the roll, please?
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 154 is to approve an administrative contract recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution 155 is to approve a supervisor contract recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution 156 is to approve a non exempt probationary contract for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 157 is to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of the West Georgia Local School District and the West Georgia Education Association. This relates to the completion of teacher evaluations for the 2019-20 school year and implementation of考试2.0.
Do we have a moment?
So moved.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Dr. Mark Rort? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 158 is to approve the bid and contractor for seal coating and patching at West Georgia local schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 159 is to approve the bid and contractor for Westwood Elementary Parking Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? I think Sean reviewed this extensively with with us last meeting or the meeting before.
Yes, the much needed Westwood Elementary Parking improvements.
We are going to lose the Westwood pond.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution 160 is to approve the contractor for Westwood Elementary Kindergarten renovations.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Superintendent report.
Right, as everyone knows, this has been a very unusual year for us in terms of ending the year. Our usual events and milestones have been replaced by some substitutions which reflect the creativity of our of our administrators and our teachers in putting these together. I'm just going to give you some dates that which you can for which you can mark your calendars. This Thursday, May 28th, we will have what used to be a clap out at our elementary schools, which is now a drive by clap out, which is better than many drive by events. But to begin with, Lindsay Elementary will have theirs at 10:30 in the morning. They have the time slotted from 10:30 to 11:30, but it may actually take longer than that, we'll see. And then for Westwood, the times are 12:30 to 2 o'clock. I don't know why one's an hour and a half and one's an hour. Maybe they drive slower at Westwood, but this has been carefully scripted out, takes place in the parking lots. Parents and their students will come in cars. Social distancing will be observed and some of our staff will be there to clap for the student and to wave to the kids they haven't seen for several weeks. So thank you.
That's on Thursday, Rich?
That's on Thursday, beginning at 10:30 at Lindsay and and I'm sorry, 12, yeah, 12:30 at at Westwood. Middle School has some events which they've been participating in. One happened today with the passage passing out of signs for the eighth graders' yards. It seems to be something trendy this year certainly. And we had some parents who took that effort and and ran with it. So we have signs in our eighth graders' yards and warning the high school that they're in fact on their way. So much thanks to the parents who put this together. The the middle school is also in the process of producing a a memory video, eighth grade memories, which will be on YouTube and which all the students will be able to access. They've also printed programs for the traditional eighth grade award ceremony and also put the names of the students in who are the recipients of those awards this year, even though there will be no in person ceremony. The middle school's events are a little more detailed because obviously we're talking about graduation, I mean, the high school, I'm sorry. High school events will be more detailed because we're talking about activities in lieu of graduation. The actual handing out of diplomas, which is more like this year, pick up your diploma, is on a stage which will be set up outside the high school on June 1st and June 2nd from 8 to 7. Students will be coming in five minute intervals and they'll be with their parents to walk across the stage, receive their diploma while maintaining a safe social distance from other families and other students. The videos of that will be composed into one large video for the students to view that will look like a fairly typical graduation. Speeches, et cetera, will be included into that video. And that will be shown on June 14th at the drive in on Mayfield Road in Chardon, beginning at 9:15 PM. Actually, West GTB will also be working with some of our staff to put together sort of a memories, highlights video, which will begin the graduation ceremony and last approximately 15 minutes. And then around 9:30 will actually be the graduation ceremony that will be shown on the screen there. There will also be a parade in between those two events. On June 4th, there's a parade that will begin at St. Anselm's and and lead down to the high school by parade. It's going to be people in cars. It'll be our seniors. Their families will be, in some cases, extended family may be out by the road if they park on side roads and walk down to the road by past the high school. They can can view the students as they go by in their cars. And then parents also will be on hand, in many cases, riding in the cars with the graduates. So again, to recap that, June 1st and 2nd, those are the dates of the actual in person receiving of the diploma. June 4th is going to be the parade at 7:00 PM. And then on June 14th is the event at the drive in in Chardon, and that will begin at 9:15 PM. Okay, so that covers all of the all the schools in terms of the end of the year events. In the meantime, I know there has been a lot of activity at the schools with students coming to pick up their personal belongings and those being distributed to students, the contents of their lockers, et cetera. At this stage of the game, all of that has been done outside of the school with assistance from staff who have carried out students' belongings, who them bagged, et cetera. But we have not had, other than our our administrators and our teachers, we have not had staff or we've not had parents and our students in the buildings. That's it. That's my report.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Mark Rort. Any questions for him? Okay, board report. Let me just give you a brief update as where we're at with the working with Newberry. You've probably seen a number of the emails flying around. First of all, the community input meeting last Wednesday ran into technical difficulties. We were not able to complete that. So that has been now rescheduled for for this Thursday evening at 7 o'clock. So that will be a community input time for, first of all, we'll have a brief presentation and then the opportunity for questions. There is currently a survey that is live trying to get input from community members as to what their thoughts are about how to use the property. On Friday night, we will be meeting with the Newberry trustees who have expressed some interest, I believe, in the property. So we will be having that discussion with them. Again, that is an open joint meeting and you are welcome to attend, again, another Zoom meeting. And then the results of the community input will be reported back to the community in a meeting on, at this point, it's scheduled for June 3rd. So that, you know, we let the community know that we have heard them and what we have heard from them. So those are the events that are coming up. And after that, there will also be another opportunity for them to provide input as to what they've heard. And then there will be a report by Burgess to the boards summarizing all of the input from the community meetings. Any questions? Okay. Anybody else have any board report comments that they want to make? Okay, I would like a resolution to adjourn to executive session then to discuss personnel matters, appointment and or employment. Conference with legal counsel related to pending or imminent court action and negotiations. There will be no action taken after we complete the executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Kathy, you're on mute.
Yes. Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes. We will invite Dr. Mark Rart, uh, Ms. Pendler, I believe, Ms. Benakasa and Dan McIntyre.
No, we won't have Dan there tonight.
Oh, okay. Did I miss anybody then?
All right, I believe we're Kathy, Chuck, Dan, Thorson is here. Okay, we're all here, Dr. Beers.
Okay. Next regular board meeting is Monday, June 8th, 7 PM. Again, another lovely Zoom meeting.
And we have two special meetings.
Right. One on Thursday night and one on Friday night, both at 7 PM. Again, Zoom meetings.
Right.
Uh, and then another one on June 3rd. Okay, you'll be meetinged out, I know. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kish.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim.
Nice work.